Lines tomorrow.
Yeah.
Are you situated?
Are you situated, Penny?
Good.
Yeah. Everyone turn on their microphones, please.
Hey. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, April 22nd, 2024 City Council meeting. Role call, all councilors are present. Tonight for the invocation, I think Counselor Smith is going to go ahead and share that with us.
Everybody, please join me in being the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father, amen.
Amen.
Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four on the agenda is our Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Is there anybody on the council who would like to declare a conflict of interest at this time? Okay. Item number five is public forum. Danielle, did you get anyone, send anything in for public forum?
I did not.
Okay, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Item number six on the agenda, we have three sets of minutes. What are the wishes of the council?
Move the slate.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Cruising right along. Item number seven on the agenda is bids, bid openings, awards, and appointments. And 7A is the facade improvement grant for the RC2 Tiff District results. That's on page 18 of your packet.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about this. It's sitting on that committee. Very, very well presented. I think the three places that we helped did a phenomenal job in their businesses that have made significant contributions to our, our community. And I think that it was, it was really fun to talk with them. I mean, we talked with the people that own the Caribou Win and what the work they're doing out there is very phenomenal. If you have not been out there, I totally suggest that you do. Sullivan's Floor Care, phenomenal what he's doing. But this, this is a district that they have, you know, they're, they're kind of forgotten about. County Ag and Turf Supply also. What they're doing out there is just they're, they're growing big time. And I think that it's a district that really warrants what we did for them. And I think that you'll see the amounts that we've projected for them or, or given them. It's very well worth it, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we give established, confirm decision of committee, please beg. Accept the results of the facade improvement grant committee and award of facade improvement grant the amount of $7,500 to Caribou Win and Convention Center, $7,500 to Sullivan's Floor Covering, and $7,500, $7,500 to County Ag and Turf Supply for projects described in the application and such as the terms set forth in the grant application.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Okay, I just want to go over this a little bit so that I guess everybody understands.
Yes.
This, like, this is a grant for 50% of a project, correct? Okay.
No, up to.
Up to, yes, I'm sorry, up to.
All these projects were more than that.
Right.
Up to, up to 50%. Also, they just don't get a check. They have to complete the, the project and before that any money is given to them. And is it within a certain time period that you have to do it?
Yes, and I believe it's a year.
A year?
But I would have to look at the application, but there is a time.
So it's not just, yeah, so.
This isn't a blank check thing.
Right, I just want to, I, I just want to make sure that they, you know, that listening audience and the people realize it's just not handed to them like that. They have to complete the project, if you probably have to look at it or whatever. And then, then they sign off on it then and stuff, okay.
And any project that would require a permit, they need to have all the proper permits, all the proper inspections. There are some projects that we have limits that are below the 50%, like fencing, signage, that kind of thing. But this, these were both kind of major facade improvements, and they were well over the 15,000, which would be.
And if it, if they had one that came in under that, regardless of whether it was, that you, it would only be like 6,000 or 5,000.
Right, right.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Their projects totally, each one of these projects that these people are putting out there exceed, well exceed the amount of money that we're giving them. I mean, it's amazed, it's totally amazing. I mean, it's actually miniscule. You know, for instance, okay, I think our facade improvement program on the sign thing, okay, for instance, 1,500 bucks, okay? Now, if you're going to go out there and put a sign up today, it's going to cost you a heck of a lot more than that.
Yeah.
But they, no, and I agree with you, Joan, that's a good thing to bring up.
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't just giving money away. And these people have to provide us with receipts and all this sort of deal, so.
Yep.
This is part of, we have now, we've expanded it to twice a year because it was so.
And there's one for the downtown Tiff District before, and now we have one out in the RC2 Tiff District. And this is funded through the taxes generated in those districts. So it doesn't come out of like the general fund. These are generated in that district for economic development.
And we still have 14,000 left that we can apply to any grant applications that come in in the fall, correct?
Yep.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Item number 7B is the appointment of members of the Registration Board of Appeals. So every three years, new appointments are due for the Voter Registration Board of Appeals. So the board consists of three members that are appointed by the municipal officers and the chair is nominated by the clerk. Two of the members are nominated by the major, the major political parties and serve three-year terms. So the clerk and registrar are ineligible to serve on the board. We do have letters from both the Republican and Democratic Parties with their suggestions. The names received were Christopher Lyden and Gary Sampaasong and Judy Ann Coro as the nomination for the chair. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam Mayor, I move to renew the appointments for Christopher Lyden and Gary Sampaasong as members of the Voter Registration Board of Appeals, the term ending December 31st, 2026, and Judy Ann Coro as the chair to the board, their term ending on December 31st, 2027.
Second?
Moved and seconded, discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 7C is the appointment of election workers, and that is on page 20 of your packet. Okay. So we now have several names on this list that are individuals that have expressed interest in serving as election clerks. The appointment would be made from May 1st, 2024 to April 30th, 2026. And I think everyone has a copy of this in their packets, sorry about that. Share with you. Take a peek at that. What are the wishes of the council?
Moved that we appoint, the list is proposed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Pretty good list of volunteers.
Definitely.
Yeah. You're like banging at the hammer, huh?
It's my job, counselor.
Does Counselor Smith not have a packet?
He does not, but we're sharing, it's okay.
I was going to say, we probably have an extra one in the council chamber, I mean, down in the police department.
Item number 7D are the bid results for Public Works. And that's on page 21, and I think everyone also can see that in their packets. So, and I think, Dave, would you like to come up and just speak on this a little bit?
I will.
That'd be great, since you're right here, you might as well come on up.
So I'll go down through the list because they are right in order. Culverts, the low bid was Paris Farmers at 11,307 for quantities requested. It was pretty close to FW Web, as you can see, there was a second bidder. We, we have used, Paris Snow is the one that's been delivering culverts for the last 10, 12 years, so.
Really?
Yeah, they, they all.
Not EJ Prescott?
No, you can look at EJ Prescott and see how much difference. And in the last few years, it's been that way.
Is there a difference in the quality of the culvert?
Same name, brand, everything.
Okay.
We, we get a pretty good-sized discount through certain dealers that are licensed to, to sell to municipalities. And I'm guessing that probably the only difference here is that the EJ Prescott's probably not licensed for the, for that extra reduction in cost. Don't hold me to that because I'm not sure, but, but it's, it's this way every year. They'll call tomorrow, or I'll send them a letter telling them, and, and they, they can't believe. They tell me that what they're selling for is less than their costs. So I, I don't know where the, the real discrepancy is there, but I think it has something to do with municipality discounting, so.
The fact that they're moving into Caribou, sorry, sorry, but the fact that they're moving into Caribou with their satellite office, you think that'll have any effect on us?
So, we as the Highway Department do not use a lot of supplies from EJ Prescott, but I can tell you utilities do.
Yes, yeah.
You know, they're into the water valves and the pipes and, and miscellaneous stuff like that. And that's not to say that EJ Prescott doesn't have stuff for us, it just, they're, they're not geared towards that type of business compared to the utilities.
Sorry.
So would you like me to go down through the whole list, or do you want to approve or disapprove any of them as we go, or how would you prefer to do it?
I mean, is there anything that you wanted to kind of point out to us that we should be taking note of?
Yeah, so, that's what we'll do.
Perfect.
So, street paint, that, that one there, that one was within $1,000. The Schimman Patch, we'll, we'll take the Soderbergh Construction. All three vendors can supply product at certain times. The two bigger, no, no, I shouldn't say that. What I should say is Lane Construction and Soderbergh, a lot of times they're doing jobs that the mix doesn't match what we need. We, we can't go out and fill cracks and little potholes when you have stone that's three-quarter inch. So each morning, if they are making a run of the wrong stuff, we'll end up going to Trombley's anyway, so. I'm okay with taking the bid from, from Soderbergh's. And even on my bid request, I, I even specifically say in there, depending on location or product material, we may use another vendor. They're, all three are good with it, so we should be all set there.
Where's the biggest part of the supply come from? It does, your biggest supply come, would it come from Soderbergh or would it come from Trombley?
Trombley's.
Yeah.
And it, and it's not because we don't like.
It's what they're making.
It's what they're making at the time. So we have, just so everyone understands, we have about $60,000 budget. And of that 60,000, I say that 45,000 of it will be put into dump trucks and we'll use our little paver. I can use the material that either, so if we take Soderbergh Construction, chances are when we put it through our little paver, so 40,000, 45,000, we can just accept it. The other one, the little wagon that we see filling the potholes, that's the one that's a little bit, little bit harder to use, you, you have to have the finer stuff. If they happen to be making it, we can pick it up there. If not, I will, I'll have no choice but to go to Trombley's.
Is it more advantageous for highway and for, for everybody to use just Trombley's? I mean, is it less hassle, I mean, it?
No, so, so that would go against, excuse me. That would go against what I firmly believe in the bid process.
Okay.
All three of them bid, all three of them knew that I may or may not be, I, I can go to Trombley's anytime. They, they, they do batches at a time. I can go get four ton, I can go get 20 ton, I can go get anything I want, so it's convenient.
At what price?
So there again, we can look right here, we can see it.
Right on, in your packet.
No, I know, I know, I just asked.
$90 versus 85. If you can't use the product, I mean, you go get a wagon, you're talking $20 difference. If you can't fill the cracks with it, you, you've lost. So that's why, for the purpose of tonight, I'm fine with accepting the bid from Soderbergh's. And we'll use Soderbergh's for as much as we can because they won the bid. And for the days that they cannot supply the product we need, we'll go to wherever we can.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good.
Country paving, there again, Lane Construction, they, they wanted our paving this year. So I would accept that one. The in-town paving, Soderbergh Construction was a low bid on that one. So the sand account, O'Neals, Michael, Michael Murphy from New Brunswick, they actually won the bid this year by 26 cents over Trombley Industries. I, I have no problem with either one of them. They're, they're both good people to deal with.
Dave, wasn't, wasn't there a time when you could only get the sand in Canada? Was there?
Up, up until two years ago, 100% of our sand was coming from Canada.
Less clay?
Yeah, we were getting it out of, just on the other side of limestone. Keith Savage, he sold his pit, we had a lot of problems. Lot of fines, and they would pack in the bodies. And if you didn't get rid of it in a timely fashion, traveling around, they'd pack, and then you'd fight to get that out. And, but he was $10 a yard and everybody else was 15. So we, we put up with it, you know? He, he got out of the business, sold his pit to someone else that left the city of Caribou going out to bid. Trombley's won the bid the first year. Oh my goodness, that was some nice stuff. We'd never, we'd never had it so nice for, you know, sanding. Many, many years ago, before I was director, we, we actually had, his name is Michael Murphy, but they go under O'Neals, and, and we've used his product. That year that Prescott and Caribou shared me for that six months, we had O'Neil's product over there. His, his product is fine as well, so. It's 26 cents. And, and to give you a rough idea, you're talking about $750 difference if you chose to, to go with a different bidder or keep it the low bid. I, I, I'm good either way. So the, the other one I did want to talk about is the airport crack ceiling. I sent that out to three bidders, only one sent it back. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's too small a project for some of the others down country to come up, or if they weren't working this way. I, I really don't know the reason for not going. But this is the second time we've been out to bid. The first time, we, the, the City Council, as well as myself, made the recommendation to not do it. I really don't know if we have enough airport money to do $48,000 project. If we do, we probably should do that project. We're, we're gonna, we're, we're kind of being pushed a little bit by the state of Maine to, to do maintenance on our runways that we haven't been doing.
Is it cracked up bad?
It's not real bad, but what happens with cracks is if you don't fill them, the water gets in.
Correct.
And, and there's actually even some vegetation that grows up through some of it. And then that's even worse because that, that kind of spreads it apart as well.
Should it be done?
I, I.
Do you guys want to go do it?
I can't do it, that's the problem, I don't have the equipment. I, I, I think it needs to be done.
Okay.
The need is there, I'm not sure that the money is. If, if the money's not there, then we put it off another year. If the money's there, we might as well get this one put behind us. I, I can tell you that I've been at it long enough that I haven't seen anything go down in price. Keeps going up, year to year to year. And I can give you a good example of that on the next one. So, that's going to be up to you guys on that one.
How much, does anybody know how much money we have?
I didn't know it was going to be a question, or?
Okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Penny, I didn't mean to.
Carl, any chance you know?
I was going to ask.
I don't know, it's maybe for anything else, but 130,000.
So we have one of those airport cracks, you know, I think, too. But we also budgeted some money depending there, too, but I can't seem to get the computer to talk to.
Worst case, we can use the other fund that Carl was just talking about.
We do have some in the airport.
So if it needs to be done, then I guess.
It's not one of them jobs that is going to get any better.
Right.
And I can tell you that when we, when, and I'm sure Penny can vote for this, too, but when they do major projects like they did the $3.2 million when they paved it, it was our responsibility to keep the maintenance up, and we have done nothing. We have to report once a year. Matter of fact, there's, the, the state of Maine has hired a company that's coming up this summer, and they're going to do the inspections and put a PCI score on it. When it looks like we have done nothing, it doesn't speak highly of us as a community, so.
Okay.
I, I, it's a lot of money, but it is a lot of work, too.
I, I don't know, maybe this isn't a good idea or whatever, but I really, there's two of them here that were close, that are competing with, out of Maine, actually, Haney Building Supply and the Sand. I don't know what the wishes of the council would be, but I, I would like to see it stay locally.
I agree. Especially if it's close.
Dave, was there, we, we went through this one year before. Okay, so we're, well, we'll keep going with this presentation because I'm anxious to hear about the fire station parking lots.
Yeah.
That, is that going to be complete, redone, dug out, you know, rebase, you know?
When you guys are ready for me, I'll, I'll explain to you where we're at with that.
Yeah, go ahead, we can come back, maybe Carl will find something in the meantime, but, yep, go ahead.
So the fire station was done, went out to bid in 2020. And the bids came back, there was a couple of bids, and I seem to remember them somewhere around 28,000 or 32,000 between the two bidders. At the time, the council had decided that there was a lot of work that needed to be done on the fire station, and it might be best not to do that parking lot until all the heavy traffic was done.
We talk in the back, or we talk?
Right in the very back, where they put the new generator.
Right.
And also the, the entrance that goes out to Goldfrank.
Okay.
If anyone stands out at, at the road and looks in, you can see the, the driveway is actually tipping towards the building.
Right.
The last thing you'd ever want to do is put water towards your building, especially with as broke up as it is. I know it's a brick building, but it still gets into the foundations. So we had, just like in 2020, I had a pre-bid meeting where all, it was eight contractors that was invited by a bid process saying this date at 10 o'clock, we were having a pre-bid meeting, and if you did not show up to the bidding, you could not bid on the project. And the reason I do that is because I want, I would probably have to write a 10-page report to try to explain everything the way I want it. You know, I can talk for 15, 20 minutes, half an hour, and everyone's on the same page. I bring someone that represents us as well. There's no question about what was said or what, what is expected. So this year here, we had two bids, Trombley Industries, this is their second time coming around. And then there was a new one, Kevin Tibodo. Kevin was going to do the earthwork, and he was hiring someone out of Fort Kent to, to do the paving. I actually went to a couple of jobs that that young fellow had paved, and I, I felt as though they would be satisfactory. But in a nutshell, what I've asked them to do is remove all pavement that's there. There's nothing left of any structural value. It's not like we can put two inches on top and expect it to be stronger. It's all cracked, I'm afraid of it bleeding through.
It's sunk?
Yeah, in front of the overhead doors in the back, it's wavy. So I said, the length of the doors, out 20 feet from the building, I want it excavated two feet, and I want new fill material, gravel millings of some sort put in to stiffen that up. And the hardest part about that whole project is there is two catch basins in back of the fire station, plus there's one on the corner of the EOC building, so there's three. And the outfall, the waterfall of that, the discharged side goes down the embankment, crosses Water Street, and goes down to the stream. There is nothing left to that pipe, it's gone. And back 2015, 18, when we were getting ready to do High Street, DOT wanted to use that as an outfall, and, and I told them that there was nothing left. So they, they camered it, and they estimated, even back then, it was probably a quarter of a million dollars to replace that pipe system.
At our expense?
At our, yeah, they wanted us to replace it and then let them tie onto it. So I refused it, I wouldn't do it, and I still wouldn't do it. But that does leave us in a little bit of a pickle for the fire station because that parking lot is kind of like a bowl back there. So in this bid process, what we're going to do is completely strip the pavement, and we're going to reshape the ground so that it's a positive flow all towards the, the large embankment.
Is the fact the generator there going to affect that?
No, when we set that generator, we set it high enough for, for future needs. That was my department that put that, well, we didn't set this up, we did underground work for them. And everything is up high. We are limited by that man entrance door that's right close to the generator. There's not a lot of room there, so that means not a lot can go up against the building to try to shed the other way, so you may have to excavate some of the embankment. I also said in that meeting that there'll be no pavement put down until I do an inspection of the grounds to make sure that the water is going to flow, because once the pavement's down, you, you don't have a second choice. So it's the intentions, or it's my intentions, if you accept this bid, that we do the entire parking lot in the back, and that will be clear up to in between the insurance company and, and the EOC building. There's new pavement in that first part, so we'll go up in there 10 feet. We'll just cut a joint and start from there, and it'll go clear out to Goldfrank.
How far up the driveway?
So I'm going to tell you that, you know where the little side entrance door is that goes into the EOC in the cellar?
Yeah.
Right from there down. And, and, and there is a little sidewalk there, about four feet. It's not, it's, it's, it's not up to standards. I'm, I, I said, we're going to take it out of there. There's granite carbon, we're going to pull it out, we're going to remove the sidewalk. And that will give us a little bit of room to make the new hot tub go clear to the building, and we can make a swale depression to keep the water out of there, keep it away from both buildings.
Dave, in regards to the retaining wall that's back there, this is something we've discussed before. So if we do these improvement factors like that, which is excellent idea.
Yeah.
How's that going to affect the rehab of that retaining wall that's been discussed, I don't know, over and over?
So.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do, yeah. That retaining wall, I have said it in the past, you will never push on that wall to get that to go back unless you excavate on the front side on the upper parking lot. Our hands are going to be pretty full with what we have for the summer. I, I would like, I would. I, I would like, I would think that maybe truthfully, next summer might be a project for that, but the department could go and, and, and dig two feet in front of that wall, relieve the strain that's against it. Maybe we could try pushing with our loaders from the parking lot down below, where we could push the wall back, and then I would like to anchor it with some, 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 you know, something to anchor it, whether it be through the, through the wall bolts or whatever, but and then when we, there's already holes down in that wall, I believe that them drains are plugged. I would suggest that once we get that dug out, we put some new pipe in, some, you know what I mean, and then we, we put stone in there so that the water can.
But, so what we're gonna do with this project here, if we do this, okay, fire station project, how much of an effect will it have on, are we gonna lose anything?
We're not, no, no, I, I would not come to you with the recommendation of doing that parking lot if I thought that something was gonna get destroyed when we work on that wall. I, I'd really like to tell you that I'd, I'd like to get that wall done this summer, but I can honestly tell you that I probably won't get to it. I have a full crew, thank you again. But we're gonna have to play catch-up for some of the stuff that didn't get done last year, so our, our plate will be pretty full.
Okay, you got a question?
No, I'll make a motion.
Oh, yep.
I'm gonna attempt to do this in one motion. I make a motion that we award the culverts two thousand twenty-four to Paris Farmers, street paint two thousand twenty-four to Haney's Building Supply, shim and patch two thousand twenty-four to Soderbergh Construction Caribou, country paving, two thousand twenty-four to Lane Construction, in-town paving twenty-four, Soderbergh Construction, sand, two thousand twenty-four, Trombley Industries for limestone, airport crack ceiling, one eighty seal coat, Caribou, fire station parking lot Trombley Industry, limestone, Maine.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Okay, Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you guys for everything. So, we are gonna go with Paris Farmers, and then we're gonna do Sherman Williams, or Haney's?
Haney's.
Haney's.
Is there?
Yep, Haney's.
And then...
Soderbergh.
Soderbergh.
Yeah, so the sand was the only other one.
Yes, sand.
You went with Trombleys?
Trombley.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I will get the notices out tomorrow, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
May I just see the backside of that fire station?
Yeah, so I did wanna tell you one other thing, just, just for a point of reference. Oh, no, I did, I'm sorry, I told you it was one, twenty-eight and thirty-two. So, now, you can see what it's gone up in the last four years.
Okay. Item number seven E is a letter appointing an acting city manager, and Penny, did you wanna just share this with us a little bit?
Sure. So, this is just because I'm going to be temporarily away from my post here. This isn't because of any staffing changes or anything like that, it's just I'm going away for training, so I need to appoint an acting manager, so I'm appointing Gary Markey to serve as the acting manager.
Has he had a criminal background check?
Aren't you glad you're here tonight, Gary?
There is, there's no pay or perks for this position.
I'll give you free coffee, I'll give you free coffee, Gary.
I make, okay, I make a motion to appoint Gary Markey as the temporary city manager in the absence of the city manager in her absence.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Ah.
Smith? Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Gary, you're in.
We're gonna spend now.
Yeah, but you still, you gotta check with the mayor, okay, you gotta check with the mayor, okay?
I, I report to the mayor. Friday, Friday's the day.
So, just, just an update on the crack ceiling, so I looked and we budgeted six thousand for this year. We probably had about that much last year, we budgeted in the expense budget. So, this past year, I had, at the end of the year, I had asked our finance director to move it into a reserve account so we could use it this year. I'm guessing we must have put it in reserve, I, I know I had sent an email, but I can't seem to find the email, and I can't find it in an account, but so we probably don't have any more than twelve thousand in there.
Okay.
But we have, we do have some in the airport reserve.
Yes, okay.
I just wanted to follow up on that.
Yeah, I think that we, we'll need to move some money or something, I don't know how it's done, but in order to maintain the surface there, because I understand how important it is, and facilitate inspections and all that sort of deal, so I don't know how it's done, Grant, I mean, Carl can...
Well, maybe we need to be setting it up as a capital expense.
There you go, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that it's there for every year, I'm not sure why it was in the expense bracket.
Well, I think if you do, if you do it now, it's gonna be good for at least five or ten years, it, so I think that once it's done...
Okay. All right, item seven F is recognition of May fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-four as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Penny, do you wanna tell us about this?
Sure, so the week of May fifth and May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, is observed as the fifty-fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week to recognize the important work done by the professional municipal clerks in Caribou. The attached proclamation has been drafted for acceptance by the Caribou City Council.
I can go ahead and read that, actually, too.
That would be great.
Okay. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now, therefore, we, the Caribou City Councils, do recognize the week of May five through eleventh, two thousand twenty-four as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk Danielle Berset, and to her deputy clerk Christina Drinkle, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Great. And will we have that to sign today? Perfect, thank you.
I hope we're celebrating with tacos, since it starts on Cinco de Mayo.
Not a bad idea. That's not a bad idea at all.
Where we going, your place, or Danielle's?
I'll make tacos.
Okay.
Do you have a special Cinco de Mayo menu at your place?
Yeah.
I will make one.
There we go. Okay, item number eight, public hearings and possible action items. Eight A is a public hearing on the malt liquor, wine, and spirit sales for the Sizzle and Slice Restaurant, and this is on page twenty-six of your packet. What are the wishes of the council? Oh, whoops, I gotta open the public hearing first. Public hearing opened at six thirty-nine PM. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Anybody from the council wish to speak?
I think they're gonna be a fine addition to our community, and the fact that they're maintaining an established business and getting it going and keeping it going, I think it's very, very important.
I'm also glad to see a business remaining and not, not leaving, so that's great.
Absolutely.
Wish them the best.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at six forty PM. And now, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Sizzle, Sizzle and Slice located at Thirty Skyway Drive, Unit three hundred dash four hundred.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next public hearing is for ordinance two of the two thousand twenty-four series, establishing the Caribou Horizons Youth Council. This is on pages twenty-seven through thirty-eight of your packet. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for this at six forty-one PM. Prior to, you know, before we have people come up, or I just wanna give a little background, so can, councillor Bagley has made a PowerPoint presentation on this initiative, called the Caribou Horizons Youth Council. The proposed ordinance was introduced at the February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four meeting, with a public hearing scheduled for tonight's meeting. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this? Councillor Bagley, would you like to speak on this?
Could you want me to step through this, this presentation?
If you would like to.
Okay.
I actually haven't, I was able to get this working.
Just in time, right, very, very good. Well, we'll, we'll keep it brief, but, so over the past few years in government service here in Caribou, it, it, it occurred to me that the youth really don't have a formal voice, you know, for our city government, and really the direction of the city itself, and I began wondering, you know, what are we missing out on by not having that input from our youth? Who really are the future of the city, right? So, I began looking around and discovered, it turns out that there are a lot of cities around the country who have instituted youth councils as a way of getting that input from the youth in that perspective, and they become kind of an adjunct to the, the management body of that city, like a city council like us. And so, I thought, wow, this, this could be really useful to, and beneficial to the city of Caribou. So, I started thinking about ideas of how we might create a model that follows that, and came up with this idea for the Horizons Youth Council. So, what is it? Basically, it's intended to be a joint initiative between the city and the school district. So, we would be doing it together, it would serve as an official advisory committee to the city council, bringing that youth perspective. We envision that it will be made up of, like us, seven individuals, both seniors and juniors and seniors from high school, to provide input and recommendations, and also to conduct that outreach by planning and, and executing, like, youth-based events around town. And so, we, we would want to have a, kind of a selective process where we try to ensure a diverse collection of different perspectives and backgrounds, and so, that's why we didn't think really, like, an election, a school election, like a student council would be, because we're not sure we would get that diversity, and so, we really wanna kind of engineer that diversity into that group. So, if you go to the next one. So, I see a lot of benefits for this, first of all, it provides that formal input for our youth into how the city government works. It provide, it also provides us the benefit of getting that perspective, and helps us to govern better, I think. It will promote regular and participation from our civic, from our youth in civic activities, which means that they will kind of, kind of grow up with that service attitude, and hopefully, light a spark in them to continue that kind of service throughout their, throughout their lives to the city. Down toward the bottom, provides high school students an opportunity to earn those community service hours, strengthening, strengthen their college applications and scholarship applications. And honestly, this is a really good one, it strengthens the relationship between the city leadership and the school district, which I think is a really, really good thing, and it would be done all for the purposes of benefiting the youth in our community. Go to the next slide. So, what, what will they do? Just like any other committee or board that serves the city and the city council, they'd establish their bylaws, have regular meetings, elect their officers, and then, as I mentioned before, conduct that outreach among their peer groups to actually to get that perspective, and then bring it back to us in the form of attending our meetings, giving them the opportunity to provide their input and their recommendations to us on a regular basis, and then formulate an annual report to the city at the end of the school year. And finally, who will support? So, again, it's a joint, kind of a joint effort. So, the city council will support by creating a council liaison to help advise and guide the council. The Caribou High School staff will likewise assign an advisor, who will guide and advise the group as they go. They will be in charge of nominating those students to us for approval to serve on the council, and then provide whatever materials necessary for the operations of the youth council. And the city staff, meeting space if needed, we don't really think that they'll need meeting space, but there may be opportunities to, to have them here in our spaces, maintain the official records, and really just to respond to any information requests that may come in from them. Next, so, what are the next steps? So, we've already started socializing the concept among the school district and high school. The next step, of course, we're here tonight to have a vote on the ordinance that establishes the youth council, and then after approval by the city council, you know, then we can go ahead and start the process by assigning the city council liaison, the Caribou High School staff liaison, and further develop and coordinate the plan. As you look in the, in the resolution that talks about the ordinance, it's pretty general on those roles and responsibilities. We really have to dig a little deeper and really get to who's gonna do what, when, and how. And then outreach, obviously, this will take some time to, to get out, get, get the word out to, in the schools and the city, and we hope to, you know, start this for the next school year, that's the goal, anyway. So, that was my pitch, did you have any questions from the council? Or maybe, maybe now would be a good time to get input from the public, if there's anybody here who wants to address it?
Mr. Goodwin, come on up, Ben Goodwin's here this evening from CHS.
And as Mr. Spelman said, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ben Goodwin, the assistant principal, and on behalf of Jane McCall, I came here to represent CHS with this, with this agenda. I know, at this time, everyone's plates are full, and sometimes it's a daunting task with new initiatives set forth that, are we gonna have the time, are we gonna have the resources, are we gonna have the funds available to provide these new initiatives? But just a case in point, we kind of had this situation with our ELO program, and it was a fairly new initiative. We had a couple key members in our district that took the bull by the horns, and I think we lead the state in external learning opportunities, and that provided, provided an impact, a true impact on not only the student learning process, but those community relationships that have formed with the work that students do outside of the classroom. And this is another opportunity, I think, that can provide the school and city relationship that I think is needed in this area. And I would, I'd really like to see it come to fruition, I think it'd be a great additional opportunity for the students and for the town of Caribou. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the council who wishes to speak?
Yes, something that I disagree with, okay, the fact that students in our, in our community, their best place they can get an education in government beginning is through their student council, that they can learn the proper etiquette of parliamentary procedure, getting elected to office, okay, which is very important, like we have to do. We here, okay, as councils, we have to get elected to office. So, I think that when the question is made that how the students of Caribou, okay, don't have a voice, or don't have the ability to get involved with... have a voice or don't have the ability to get involved with city government, I guess is what we're going to call it, I disagree with. I think that first off, if you participate in your social, your school government, that's the best place you can learn, before you can go on to bigger and better things. I find this to be another advisory group that can do a lot, maybe possibly harm to our ability to govern. I think that, and I'm going to be open about this, okay? I think that it's going to take a lot of time away from our, our local staff government. I think that in concept, it may sound like a good idea, but I think if students want to get involved in government, first place they should start is with their student government. That gives you a chance to learn, okay, and to feel things out and get a chance at things. But to throw them into an atmosphere like this right off, especially being appointed, not elected, I think that, I think that's an issue. I do not support this concept. I think that, and I will be right up front with it, Dan, it's a good idea. You know, I know you put a lot of effort into it, but I do not support it, only because I don't think that it'll bring any good to us. I think that students have a voice, okay, and it's called student government. And actually, they can come in, okay, at any time, any student, any person from the government, from the public, come in here and address us with any concerns that they have. We don't need to be advised, because that's what we're elected for, that's what we're here for. We're here not to be advised. And I think what I'm finding in my last couple of years here, okay, is that it seems like every frigging, every time we turn around here, we're being advised by somebody. Somebody else is telling us to do something that it doesn't make any sense. And I think it, it makes our ability to govern or to make decisions harder. So I think that this is just another avenue to increase that prospect. Again, I'm not taking anything away from our youth, nothing away from the school system, okay, whatever, but I personally think that students, if you want to get involved in government, I was a student representative, okay, government. I was president of my class two years in a row. And it, and I, that was the best thing that I ever did. And I think that that's where you start. You start there with the basics, then you go from there. I would hate to see, okay, because you brought the thing about appointing, okay? People being appointed, not elected, okay? That people being appointed, okay, from the school, from the school kids, okay, whatever, but the school kids wouldn't feel comfortable with that. But I think that anytime you're going to set up a committee like this, it should be an election or an appointment. And I, and again, I think that their best avenue to get started in government, okay, is to start with their social, their school government, and then grow from there.
Thank you. And so, Terrio?
Yeah, you took some of my thunder, thunder away, but I'll continue.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
I do, I'm sorry. I do agree. I don't believe this is the time to do it. I'm not seeing anybody except Mr. Goodwin. I'm not seeing students here to advocate for themselves to do this, and that concerns me. They can come to the meetings anytime they want. They don't have to be invited. They can speak at the podium if they have any good ideas or any ideas or any questions or anything like that. They, we don't have to have a youth council for that. I don't agree that at this time in implementing this, because the city, they're, they're short-staffed, especially the municipal end of it. And I don't want to have any more extra work put on them for anything whatsoever. And I, I think this is the wrong time. I think that they've got, if they've got a student council and they're elected and they can have their own little governments within the school, and as I said before, they can come and talk to us anytime they want in open forum, but I, I can't, I can't support this either.
Anybody else?
I would agree actually with Counselor Morrell and Counselor Terrio. And I do think it's a matter of timing to a certain extent, because I think we are very short-staffed here on the municipal side. And, and I can't speak for the high school staff by any means, but again, I know that they've got a lot going on with their municipal, or, excuse me, their school budget and all of that that's coming up. And it just seems like everybody's stretched pretty thin right now, so this maybe could be something that could be revisited, but it seems like maybe not the best time to start something like this. My other thought on this, and it kind of goes along with something Counselor Morrell said, was they do have a really great student council at the high school, and maybe we give those students an opportunity to come here to maybe represent CHS at a meeting once a year or something like that, and we, we can involve them in our meeting process once a year.
That's a good idea.
To have the students, to be able to be involved, but it's the students who are already on the student council, because it's something that they want to do. And it's something that they've, that they have strived to do, so.
Very good idea.
Those are my thoughts.
Anybody else have anything?
Did you have anything to add to that or to speak to those?
No, are we still on the public hearing or are we going to vote?
Yes, we're still in the public hearing right now.
Well, we'll bring it to a vote, and these are all good points, things that we thought of and discussed, you know, already. So it comes as no surprise that these are the concerns. And, you know, I accept, I accept that, that I think we should bring it to a vote and then we'll figure out where to go from here.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at six fifty-seven PM. What are the wishes of the council?
I move to adopt ordinance two, twenty twenty-four series, and ordinance to adopt chapter twenty-three.
There a second? Okay. Hearing no second. I guess we will have to table this issue for the time being.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Or the motion fails. Okay. Okay. Motion failed. But I'd just like to say, I do, I see merit in the idea. I just think it might be a tough time to make a go of it, with everything that's going on in the community right now.
Sure, I understand. Thank you.
Item number nine A, under reports by staff and committees, is the March financial report. Carl, take it away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Counselors and Manager. Your notes for the financials for March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four is on page thirty-nine. I'll be starting on page forty. March assets for the month ended at eleven million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. Cash on hand was five million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents. Three-quarters of the way down the page, the twenty twenty-three tax receivables for the month of March, we collected a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. Bringing our twenty twenty-three commitment down to four hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. As of the end of March, we've collected ninety-four point three percent of our commitment. This is about five-tenths of a percent higher than last year through the month of March. For twenty twenty-four commitment, we've collected so far a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents in prepayments. On the next page, towards the bottom, the liabilities for the month ended at eight million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Moving over to page forty-four, our fund balance ending at the end of March was three million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Moving over to page forty-seven, our expenses for the month of March, under the current month total, we had total expenses at eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. And as you can see, our budgeted numbers are in the, in the system now. And we are at nineteen point eight, point zero eight percent spent, so that's five point nine percent under budget through the first quarter of the year. Moving over to page fifty-two for revenues. Our revenues for the month came in at three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents, and we are at thirteen percent total revenues collected, and that's down twelve percent through the first quarter. Excise taxes for the month, we collected a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, and we're at three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one seventy-one, eighty-four year-to-date. That is under budgeted for the first quarter, four and a half percent. Revenue sharing for the month of March, we were low. It was sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Year-to-date, we're at four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, and that's one point eight percent under budget, about thirty-six thousand dollars. Moving over to page fifty-seven, our investment report for the first quarter. I had a couple renewals under the Gordon Roberts Memorial CD. We renewed that for two years at a four and a half percent. Also with the G. Harmon Memorial CD, we did that one for two years, and that's the highest rate I could get, at four point five percent.
It's not bad.
Not bad, nope. They're still hanging in there. It looks like the feds aren't going to be moving the interest rates until twenty twenty-five now, so. And on the next page, on page fifty-eight, is the graph for the month, and it shows the expenses to budget. Gives you an idea where we're at. We're about almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget the first quarter.
That's basically related to unfilled positions and that sort of deal, would you say, or?
Yes. Since the budget passed, we haven't had a chance to advertise yet.
Yeah, right, right, right.
That's my report. If anyone had any questions?
Counselor Smith, did you have a question on the revenue report?
Yeah, the, just the thirteen percent collected, that's thirteen percent of what we projected, correct?
Right. As, as far as what we budgeted, what we budgeted. And of course, those numbers go up once we hit commitment. So our biggest revenue source is taxation.
Is taxation, so that's everything? That's what's my question, not just the taxation.
Yeah, it's, it's very, thirteen percent so far.
That's an evil word.
Pardon me?
That's the evil word.
I know, but it's, I mean, we're not here to make money, so that's, that's our biggest source of revenue, that and excise tax.
Too bad.
And revenue sharing. But revenue sharing, since COVID, they've funded it. Before that, they weren't funding, until legislations passed, so we anticipate that going back to those levels probably, once the COVID money runs out, which is starting to run out.
That'd be detrimental. Could be very detrimental, but revenue sharing is a big, it's a big thing.
Anybody have anything further?
Motion to accept the financials as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the financials. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith? Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Carl. Okay, item nine B is the city manager's report.
There should be a who.
As always.
So the Riverfront Power Plants, the EPA circular action is planned to start in May, and they want to do some kind of public outreach. I have not heard exactly what that is or what it's going to be yet, but they are working on that. Our Brownfields grant, we are required to put up signs saying that the project is funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law. We did have a sign up, and it was vandalized, so. But luckily, we got a picture to send to EPA before it got vandalized, so that's good. The broadband initiative, I did receive an email from the Maine Connectivity Authority that states that they are close to a contract with Charter for the communities that were covered in the Reach Me Grant Award from April two thousand twenty-three. The Ogrin Road Dump Solar Project, there's no real new updates. They are online now, so they will be.
Oh, yeah?
Yep, so for twenty twenty-four's tax commitment.
Yeah.
They will be under the renewable energy exemption instead of the business equipment tax exemption, which they were under last year. Events and marketing, the next event is the spring runoff Saturday, May fifth. In your packet, it says the eleventh, but that was the old day, it is the fifth.
May fifth.
Excuse me, what did I say? Say April?
May.
May, yeah, May fifth. You can contact the Recreation Department for more details. The Citywide Yard Sale is May seventeenth through the nineteenth. That one's correct, right? Also, many folks have asked about the annual brush removal program. That will be May sixth through the ninth. Is that correct, Terrio?
Yeah. It may go longer than that. It just depends on if we make it through by the ninth.
But everyone needs to have their brush in front of their house, May sixth, at what time?
We start at six o'clock in that morning.
No, yeah.
So work the weekend, do whatever you have to do. We are going through one time, and we are not looking back.
Yeah.
And if you, so there'll only be one pass through each neighborhood, and rural residents should call for pickup, correct?
Yeah, and I have been getting calls. I probably have twenty-five on the list. So it, it's a very well-received program. I think people like it.
Yep.
Anything about tire pickup?
No, it's a brush, wood product, all.
It costs a lot of money to dispose of tires, yeah. So the land bank was discussed at the last meeting. We're waiting to see what happens on the state level. The chapter thirteen rewrite, the Planning Board has asked staff to work up a timeline for getting changes to a public hearing. The Federal American Rescue Plan Act, the two applications to the Arustic County ARPA matching grant program were approved. The Caribou Development Committee met on April seventeenth, and dates are being scheduled for some follow-up events. The facade improvement program was on tonight's agenda. Business outreach, as Counselor Morrell said, we were able to meet with several business owners during the facade improvement grant application process.
That is wicked cool, by the way. I mean, it's a.
I know you enjoy that. And I hope that the mayor always appoints you to that committee, because you are always very happy with that.
Great program.
Counselor Bagley.
It's a great, it's a great, it's a great program. I mean, it's, it's wicked cool.
Yeah, Counselor Bagley represents the Development Committee on our panel also. And we have Gary is a staff member that represents us on there, Tony Micho from the Building Department, and also Dave Corvo from the Planning Board also is on there too. So it's, it's really great to have that support for the program. So for the police station, SW Cole has submitted their geotechnical report for the police station sites. The airport, the bids are in for the Apron Project, and Soderbergh Construction of Caribou was the low bidder. The comp plan update, the Planning Board, again, this is another project they've asked staff to work up a timeline, timeline for getting a draft of the twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four comprehensive plan. Karen Gorman from our staff and Kristin Henry and Jay Cam from NMDC staff have been working on this. LDE two thousand and three implementation, the Planning Board has received a document for their review from NMDC. Arustic Waste Solutions, there was a meeting held on April nineteenth. I was not able to attend that meeting. Cary Medical Center, the one-hundredth anniversary of Jefferson Carey's vision for Caribou Community Hospital will be celebrated all year long in two thousand twenty-four. And other updates, thank you to everyone for your work to get through another winter. So bring on the spring.
Wait till Wednesday.
Did you ever get in touch with person about the light on the river, the pole on the River Road being?
Nope, it's on my list.
Okay, but you haven't had a chance to yet, okay.
Also, for your manager's report, I did circulate this, I didn't get this in time for the packet, but there is a page, and this is also available on our website, that has like all the grants. but there is a page, and this is also available on our website, that has like all the grant updates, which includes the ones we talk about here, but also some of the other grants that we are working on. A lot of times, folks think that we, when we're awarded a grant, they give us a check, that is not the case. Much like Counselor Terrio talked about the facade improvement grant, where we don't pay people until the work is done. Same thing with a lot of these grants. Superintendents of Parks and Rec, Gary Markey and I have still been working through the process to get the funding that's been promised through the two thousand twenty-three congressionally-directed spending request program. And we keep emailing and we're not getting any.
You sent that to us in email, right?
Yeah, I mean, I try to let you know, like where, you know, where I am on these things because I know you get questions from people. And, and so sadly, I'm nowhere on that, and.
But people would have to understand, okay, first off, say, we're doing our bit, we get it, okay, we get it, okay? If you actually look at this list, when I tell people, the money that has been allocated to Caribou is phenomenal, okay?
It takes a lot of work.
But it takes a lot of work for us to get it. Like you said, you just don't write, they just don't write us a check, okay? It's, and that's, but it's very, very misconceiving about it. It's great to have it, but it takes a lot of work.
It does, I mean, yesterday afternoon, I worked for like four hours on our reports that were, that are due this month for our end-of-the-quarter reporting for our MBRC grant.
Right.
You know? It's four times a year, and I mean, this report, there was a little bit more to this one because I also had to talk about like the matching funds and, which will have like Public Works and the Parks Department helping to work on projects, we have staff time. But all of these things I have to document for them. And, you know, it takes, it takes a lot of time and, and I, people don't understand. And it's just like Gary was working on a grant, you know, today, and you found out about your snowmobile grant today. All of that, it doesn't just happen, like people have to do the work. And we are very fortunate that we, you know, our staff takes the time to do this so that we can have nice things. But it's, you know, there is work to it. And one of the reasons for having this flyer was just because, you know, staff was hearing these things that, you know, for some reason, we weren't working on it, but I'm trying to have all the updates in one place so that you know that we are indeed working on the projects. It's just everyone else moves at the speed of government, you know?
Well, I will say, I mean, just looking at this, this is a testament to how hard the staff is working and how hard folks are working to bring some money into the community, so I think this is really great. And I think people need to go on the website and check this out because this is really, really impressive. Thank you.
There's a lot of money on the sheet.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is like, this is not a.
Yep, it's a lot. So also, as part of the manager's report, I also wanted to talk about, it's been discussed in the community about the, the tax rate. People ask this time of year, what's the mill rate going to be, what are my taxes going to be? So I thought we would take just a few minutes to talk about our tax rate, which is a compound tax rate, it's made up of our municipal appropriations, the school funding, and the city portion of the county tax. So our municipal appropriation is the amount needed to fund all city departments and it's reduced by revenues like our Finance Director Grant talked about today, which is, you know, excise, state funds like revenue sharing, exemption reimbursements that are, the, our assessing department works on, and also anything else that comes in for revenue. So the City Council approves the expense and revenue budgets after a public hearing, and this was set in March per city charter. And the City Council may not increase the annual expense budget after the budget is passed. So that's one section of the bill. Then there's the school funding, so the amount that needs to be raised is the amount to operate RSU thirty-nine. So of that amount, ninety-five point six one percent, and this is me using numbers that are on this, this state website. We have to go by, the DOE puts out different reports, and so I go online and look at those. Caribou was ninety-five point six one percent, Stockholm, our other member of the RSU is four point three nine percent. And of course, this amount is reduced significantly by state aid to education. So the School Board sets the school budget and it goes first to a district budget meeting, where the warrant articles for each cost center are approved individually. And then the budget is set to a validation vote. So for twenty, for the two thousand twenty-five school year budget, Wednesday, May twenty-second will be the district budget meeting and Tuesday, June eleventh, for the budget validation vote. I don't believe we have a location yet for the district budget meeting. The last couple of years, it's been at CPAC, but I don't know for sure that's where it's going to be. Our voting will be at the Wellness Center on June eleventh, as it always is. So the assessors for the city must raise the amount billed by the RSU. The City Council doesn't have any agency over that bill. They're given a bill, we have to pay the bill, we have to raise the money to pay that bill. So the other portion of the tax bill is county tax. So the Arustic County budget is apportioned to all areas of Arustic County by the equalized state valuation. It includes amounts to operate county operations, which is a distinct and separate budget from the county jail budget. So Caribou is third for their equalized state valuations. That means our bill is the third highest in Arustic County. So that would be behind the unorganized townships, they would altogether make up the largest portion. And the city of Prescott. And the county commissioners and the county finance committee, who are elected officials, they work to prepare and approve the budgets after consultation with the county administrator and the department heads at the county. So this year, the county is transitioning to a fiscal year and will send out eighteen months of county tax. So we've seen the first six months of that bill. We're going to be getting another bill for twelve months. So that twelve-month bill is going to be due in September, like it is every year. The council has voted to the six-month bill to pay it in thirds. So we'll have to, we're going to be paying for a third of that first bill and then all of the second bill. So a public hearing on the twelve-month budget will be Tuesday, May fourteenth, and comments from the public can be submitted until three P.M. that day. So again, like the school budget, the assessors for the city must raise the amount that is billed to the city by the county. The municipal officers, the City Council has nothing to do with that budget either. I mean, this year was a little bit different because you could vote to pay, you know, all six months of the six-month bill at a time or half or, you know, a third. But the actual number, the City Council has no.
Say.
No say, in that they just have to pay the bill. So to determine the amount to be raised by sending out tax bills, the total amount to be raised from property taxes, we have to combine all those three, the municipal amount, the school amount, and the county amount. So we have to take that and divide it by the taxable valuation in Caribou. So using the two thousand twenty-three tax year as an example, the total taxable valuation was four hundred and seventy million, two hundred and twenty thousand, fifty-nine dollars. And the amount of tax for commitment was nine million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So our tax rate was point zero one nine five, or if you want to talk about it as a mill rate, nineteen point five. And if you're wondering, so a mill is one one thousand, one one thousandth of valuation, so four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and about six cents. So a mill rate of nineteen point five means the city raised nineteen and a half mills. So nineteen and a half times the four seventy-two twenty, and you get your tax for commitment, which was nine million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. So I hope that helps as we're discussing the tax rate and questions that you may be getting from just the public about, about that and where those numbers come from and which things the City Council can control and which ones they don't have any control over.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, just one time here, I guess the, the city tax, or the, excuse me, the county tax. I didn't realize there was two separate distinct budgets between the jail and the operations, but when we pay.
We're just paying one amount, but it's just, their, their budgets are developed differently, and so they're distinct budgets, but we still pay our.
So whatever percentage we pay. Interesting, didn't know that.
But they're not commingled. And in fact, the county, the jail budget has been on a fiscal year. That was one of the reasons why the county went to a fiscal year, is because they were on a calendar year, but the jail was on the fiscal year, like the state.
I think it's very, very important for the public to understand this. It's something I've been advocating for a very, very long time. First off, if you get your tax bill and you're unhappy with it, okay? You can call down here and complain and do whatever, but you have to understand the three components that go into this, into this deal, okay? It's the county tax, the school department, and our municipal side. And I think that you will find, if you've watched our meetings through our budgetary process here, we've been very, very frugal and very, very good at what we've been doing. So I think it's very, very important for people to understand, okay? May twenty-second, okay, it's when the, okay, May twenty-second, if you have a problem with that portion of your tax bill, you want to get that, get out there and you want to go check it out, okay? On July, June eleventh, okay? You want to vote on it, you want to get there, vote. I went and voted last year on the school department budget, and I'm not picking on them, this is not a picking thing. Hundred and fifty people voted, hundred and fifty people voted on that total, can't remember how big of a budget it was, okay? Hundred and fifty people out of six or seven, I don't know, six or seven thousand people. It was, I could not believe it, okay? And that, so if you don't get out and voice your opinion, okay? It's important for you to understand is that, man, okay, this is your chance, that's what it is, okay? This is your chance. And I appreciate that Penny for you bringing that up. I think that was a very good presentation. And I, and you want to know something? I almost think, depending on how everything goes here, because we don't know, it should be a leaflet in the tax bill.
We can do that, I mean.
Just so, you know, explain it, you know, a very basic, you know, sort of thing, just so people kind of get it more. You know, it's a, because I mean, you can look at the, the tax bill kind of explains it, but it's kind of like, you know, you know what I'm saying?
And, and the fun fact, cities don't even have to send you a tax bill.
Oh, really?
Yep. In fact, they used to print it in the newspaper, or you'd have to come down here to city, the city office and it would be posted.
Really?
How much taxes were, yeah. It's not, by state law, the community does not have, does not need to send tax bills. If they do, they have to contain certain information about bonded indebtedness, how much the tax goes to the, the municipal school and county portions.
That's interesting.
What the interest rate is, when it begins.
Well, don't stop doing that.
No, no, I'm just saying, that, and that's a fun fact. Because we have people that will say, well, I didn't pay my tax bill because I didn't get a taxable because they don't tell us when they update their address or something.
Yeah, well, it's different.
So it would be possible to just include maybe even that little flyer in there.
Yeah.
Just something that explains it.
And another, I'm going to echo what you said, and another thing too, is that I've always felt that the amount that you're voting on when you go to the, to the polls in June to vote on the school budget, that amount should be shown on that ballot. And I haven't ever seen an amount, it should state what that amount is. So people look at that and say, oh, that's a lot of money. And he's right, it's a hundred and fifty, two hundred people, and that's it. And I've had so many people come up to me and say, what's the matter? You know, we have to, our taxes are so high. And I'll say, well, did you go vote on the school budget? And they'll say, no, we were supposed to vote, you know? And I just want to say, you know, you can't.
Well, something that concerns me also is the county tax, this county tax thing. I think that, and I think we raised a question here a while back about having.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's, Ryan.
Pelleteer.
Yeah, it's going to be coming.
I don't know, he, they should come answer some questions for us. I mean, just don't send me a bill, I mean, there's nothing I hate worse. And I want to see, you know, see your budget, like our budget.
Their budgets are online, on their, on their website. It's not right now because I did look for it when I was preparing this because I would have put a link, but it wasn't in there.
Jiminy Cricket.
The twelve-month one was on, the six-month is on their website.
Thank you. Okay, item ten A, well, item ten is new business ordinances and resolutions. Ten A is a snow removal contract agreement for unorganized territory of Connor Township. It's on page sixty-two of your packet.
Motion to accept the snow removal contract for a three-year period, July first, twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-seven, as proposed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item ten B is the Maine DOT Mill and Fill. It's a one and a quarter inch overlay project, it's project number twenty-six sixty-five, twenty-six sixty-seven, and twenty-six four hundred and thirty. And this is on page sixty-nine of your packet.
Is there anything special we need to know about this, or not really?
It's just a standard notice, yep, okay. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept the agreement between the DOT and city fill, I guess.
Second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we don't have anything under Old Business this evening, so I remember twelve on the agenda is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. We will start with Counselor Bagley this evening.
Thank you. So I attended the seventeen April Development Committee meeting and they had a couple of things that they wanted me to bring to the council. The first was had to do with establishing a dialogue with the Caribou Hospital District to perhaps consider using some of that land adjacent to the hospital to develop a, like a medical technical center. And so that kind of is, that's kind of in alignment with looking for areas for an industrial park, but their concept is to put a focus on medical technology so that it would be a partnership between the city and the hospital district. So that's there for council's consideration. They're also planning their second, what they call the Icebreaker, last couple of months ago, where they want to get together again, and they wanted some guidance from the council on specifically if there's anything that the council wants to focus on, emphasize, who should be there, and just, they're just reaching out for some guidance for that second meeting of the kind of the community, all the different committees, which I, I attended and I thought it was just awesome to see and meet everybody. So now they're taking it to the next step, which is more than a meet and greet. It's more like, let's get down to business and figure out how to work together on some things. So if you all have any thoughts on that, they would be most interested in hearing that, that was it.
Icebreaker was great. Did they happen to mention when they were thinking of doing this?
Yes, week of June eighteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lovewell, did you have anything you wanted to share?
Well, I did want to mention, of course, but everybody's kind of gotten on that topic already. Definitely get out and vote on, on June eleventh. So for those who didn't hear that already, because they're just now tuning in, vote on June eleventh because you just got on, on TV just now. And, and we'll have a Knights on Sweden starting soon, so that's going to be exciting. Some things are coming up here, a lot of activities I think will be starting as the weather gets nice. So looking forward to seeing some things coming about, so, yeah.
Warm weather.
Warm weather, yeah.
Thank you.
Snow left quick, so that wasn't bad, wasn't too bad.
Thank you so much. Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just one thing, I know there's an email going around about when the Investment Committee would meet. I was just looking at the report here. I was just looking at the, uh, report here. We get the CDs, maturities in September, maybe we could do something in June. I don't know, that's typically we meet once a year, twice maybe depending on how. So that would be the, you know, as long as we meet a few months or a month or so in advance on maturity date of those CDs, that probably be the biggest discussion. So I think that would answer to your email question.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor?
Yep, um, April 12th, we had a highway protection committee with Dave and Jody and Tamara and Peg, Penny, and we talked about the scope of the work that, um, uh, the highway department had and, and there's some paving and, and hopefully the lines will get painted a little earlier this year.
As soon as we get the streets painted, we're going to light.
Good.
Absolutely.
And the streetlights, uh, they've taken, they've gone around and looked and there's an assessment of the streetlights that have been done. And, um, so those will be addressed. Have you started putting up anymore since our talk or?
No.
I know that there's some apparatus that some, some poles don't have the apparatus anymore, so we can't put...
I, I wasn't aware that you wanted me to do that. If you'd like, I'd, I'd be more than glad to.
Facilitate it.
But I, I, I left the meeting thinking that you as a council was going to determine where which lights is going to be turned back on. Maybe I misunderstood it.
Well, I can certainly send around the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
I know that you said you had some for one neighborhood that had come out of that neighborhood, but I guess I didn't really realize that you were going to be, but anyway, I'll send it around.
I know we went through the list and we talked about them.
Yeah, I guess I just assumed that Penny or you would decide which ones to...
I, I have no problem with doing that. I guess I just didn't understand her. I, I would take care of it.
I think I have to go around like in the dark.
Oh God, don't do that. There's rabies raccoons out there.
I think she's going to stay in the car. She'll stay in the car.
I'll stay in the car.
Yeah, stay in the car.
Penny, didn't, didn't the police officer just already do that?
No, they did and they gave that to the committee. But some of them have more than one on, on a street. So the idea was, okay, if we put one of them on, then we wouldn't need to maybe put all of them on or from this street, we're just trying to figure out where they are in relation to each other.
And to probably do something about putting a streetlight at the intersections.
Intersections was a, was a big thing that they discussed.
And you touched on the brush removal, so they know about that. And the river road, um, okay. Versant, if you're listening to us, would you please go move that pole so that the highway department can fix our road? That's all we ask. And that's about it, yes, but that's been my, for what, five years now, something?
Twenty eighteen, so it'd be, and it was actually the, it was like May, I mean, excuse me, like April twenty-seventh or eighth, yeah.
Yeah. So if they could get that pole moved, if anybody's listening, uh, so that we could get that work done.
I have two quick things on that. Um, one, are we going to have a crosswalk installed near CCS on Glen Street?
I didn't know that was a thing, is that something we need to...
I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, I don't think there's one there, right Dave?
Uh-uh, I, I'm not sure.
Like across Glen Street?
A crosswalk that would cross from CCS across Glen's, uh, yeah, Caribou Community School onto Park Street, because there's like, a lot of kids walk that way when they leave the school.
I think there is a crosswalk that goes to Park Street. And it may be...
On the corner of Park.
Yeah, just check it out, okay?
There, there's, there's supposed to be one there.
Okay. Um, and then my other comment is if anyone needs help with the streetlight exploration, I don't mind helping.
Oh.
Yeah, every time the meeting, that's all I do now is look at the streetlights.
Look at the poll numbers, because I do know...
Don't get out of your vehicle, whatever you do, okay?
I'm pretty, I have a little headlamp I can wear. I will, I'll do it.
Wear high boots.
Thank you.
That's funny, I know, I know. Oh my goodness.
Councilor Kelly?
Okay, I was wondering when we had our last meeting where, um, you were with, um, the detective position that we spoke about, police department, phone reimbursements, things like that. Has anybody, anything been decided with that? Um, also training for the officers and has anyone looked into the costs for SO or SP to cover shifts that haven't been covered? In Caribou, because I know this last weekend, there was two shifts that they were short-staffed and they had one police officer. And they had to call in outside help to help with a situation because there was only one person on duty. And has anyone looked into that and where's the hiring? I know that come January, we're going to be down six officers. So I'm wondering where, where's that's going? I mean, we're gonna, do we want to hire outside SO, SP? Or do you want to keep the police stations staffed?
I think that's something that needs to be discussed with the department head. I think it's something, it's a direct conversation with the department head. It's something that, it's not necessarily city manager, city council position thing. I mean, we've made our recommendations, but I think we need to see how the department head reacts. Um, I think it's something we have to be very careful about.
He's retiring.
I know that. It, uh, uh, but that's something, it's not made public yet. But I think it's something that we need to, uh, be discussed directly with him first, so.
Well, I did, I mean, I, I did bring that up, um, last week, a week before and was told that the detective position cannot be filled until they are fully staffed.
Okay.
Um, I have asked about the other items and have asked him to coordinate with the, um, the unions to see if there needs to be a memorandum of understanding signed because of those different concessions. And that would be something that the union would need to, you know, let him know about and to get something in writing. So I have talked about those.
That's good, good.
You know? Uh, when they had, they had, um, some kind of a job fair at NMCC and they had an officer and the administrative assistant went to that. And I don't know if it has been advertised. I, I can't tell, I can't tell, I can't tell you that, I don't know.
I don't think so.
About the incident from this weekend, I did not, this is all news to me. I did not know that they had just one person on staff. I did not know, they had to call somebody, that, that's all news to me. So I don't have an update on that. I wouldn't have an update on something I just have.
I was just concerned.
And does that address what was on your list?
Yes, very much so, thank you Penny.
No, I'm all talk though.
You are?
Yeah.
Well, they are.
It was possible, John.
That I forgot about.
Well, Deputy Mayor, Terrio was going to take your place then because she just thought of something else.
Oh my God, go ahead, it's your turn.
Yeah, um, my friends and I got a chance to go to Ruska for lunch last week for the first time and, oh my God.
Oh my God.
Thanks.
That is a hopping place.
That's a hoot, huh? It's a hoot.
We like it, we like it.
And if, if anybody out there hasn't gone yet, go. And, oh, the food is so good.
Yes, it is.
We just got a, a new outdoor table with the propane fire.
Oh, nice.
Picked it up tonight, yeah, it's gonna be nice.
If people really up on top of the hill are going to be coming down now, yeah, yeah.
Bringing them all in.
Yeah, 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 kumbaya, they're going to sing kumbaya.
Well, they should.
Yeah, I think so.
It's going to be very fun.
All right.
Very loving.
So our next regular meeting will be on May 28th. We do have on the agenda an executive session for real estate matters. What are the wishes of the council?
Now, Mayor, make a motion, we go into executive session?
Second.
You have to say...
Oh, well, I, I put my paper away.
Okay.
Quote it, whatever, oh, right here. Uh, matters under MRSA Title I, Section 405 dot six.
C.
C.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right.
Move to adjourn.